Justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Dr. Feig here. Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here. Seven present.
Mr. President, this time I would like the record to show that Mrs. Love is ill this evening and is unable to attend.
Thank you. Citizens comments?
Melinda Caston.
Hi, members of the board. My name's Melinda Caston and I think I know everybody here. As you know, I've taught at Southmoreland for 35 years and most of the time I taught as a first grade teacher for 25 years. During those years, I was privileged to help children who are not to have a great high ed, serve their kids in high ed. It's such a rewarding job to be able to help children get a great academic beginning. Of course, a lot more than academics goes into an education, especially at a primary level. Since children come to school with a variety of backgrounds, teachers have quite a challenge to meet the students in their life and help them be successful. I've taught in classrooms with a big range of class sizes. It isn't hard to figure out that more students in a classroom means less individual time for each student. Because more children are coming to school with more serious issues in the past, the challenge is even greater. It's not unusual to have students with special concerns such as emotional support, learning support, autistic support, or medical disorders such as diabetes or epilepsy. These special concerns take even more of a classroom teacher's time, allowing less time for all students. I believe that smaller class sizes necessary in providing quality education for every student, and that's what Southmoreland is all about. With smaller class size, students are able to obtain the basic building blocks necessary for continuing success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Caston.
Fin- minutes, please.
At the voting meeting next week, you will be asked to approve the minutes of the July 2012 meeting.
Finance? Any questions on minutes? Finance?
We do not have financials in your packet right now. Mr. Salem, if you'd like to address this a little bit more. The reason for that at this juncture is that we don't have a bank statement for the last month, so we were unable to do a treasures report. And the more detailed financial report has not yet been run. We're still trying to iron a couple of bugs out of the new financial package. We will send that to you as soon as we're able to get it run, and we hope to have it for you long before the next meeting.
It's essentially right. New financial accounting software is very robust, and we're trying to, you know, become comfortable with it. We just haven't been able to, I mean, we've been so busy getting the purchase orders and the payroll and all that stuff ready, we haven't yet gotten a grasp on all the reports yet, so I plan to have that ready for the next meeting.
Thank you, Bill. Let the record show that Mr. Alt, excuse me one second, let the record show that Mr. Alt is here now. Go ahead, Kathy. Dr. Feig.
What is this new financial system? How does it change anything, or how does it work?
Well, the old, it's a computer system to run the finances of the district, you know, purchase orders, make checks out for payment, you know, record expenditures, record revenues. It's used to be what they called the AS400 system, and now it's through the CSIU. It's just a financial, like, if you're familiar with Quicken?
Did you say it's through the CSIU?
Central Sussex Moana Intermediation.
Is it through them?
Yes.
Were we with them before for that service?
No.
That's what I thought.
No.
They're the ones that do our reports on our attendance and stuff like that.
Yeah.
We voted on it, yeah, we voted on that. Yeah, and they couldn't do it, yeah.
Financial package. That was an old DOS package, it was a very old system. This is an entirely new system. One of the things that's different, for example, purchase orders used to be all typed by hand. They would come to the principal, the principal would sign them. They'd come to me, I would sign them. It's all, it's all online now. We point and click, so we don't have a paper purchase order that's being trailed around. So it was just a matter of getting anyone trained. And right now, we're waiting for the trainer to be able to help us run the end-of-the-month financials so we can be sure those are accurate.
Didn't you have to train all the people who signed purchase orders, too?
Yes.
Did you do that already?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I remember the thing now that you bring it back to me.
Any more questions?
While we're under business and finance, I just have an informational item for you. We're able to obtain the millage rates and increases, assessed values, revenue generated per mil, so on and so forth, for all of the districts in Westmoreland County. So I just thought that would be a very good piece of information for you to have in front of you, so we'll just pass those around.
Oh, business?
Policy 707. We are not ready to approve that policy. We had hoped that we would be, turned it over to David about a month ago. David had some things going on with some other cases that he was working on. Finally had a chance to begin a review on it, and that review is still underway, so we are not ready to present that policy. So we will, we will not have that on the agenda.
On a related item, I got a phone call, and the reason for the phone call was to ask me if the Roughstall facility down there fell under the policy 707. And of course, as it stands right now, it does not, right?
It does.
It falls under 707?
It's one of our facilities.
But there's ball fields, I don't believe.
I'm talking about the ball fields.
The building?
No.
The ball field?
The fields?
It depends on, probably not.
Okay, this is my request, probably not, yeah. This is my request. Somewhere in writing, there exists an agreement, isn't there, Jac?
Between the...
Is there one?
Softball league and...
I would like to see it. I would like to see it, and I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why, I'll explain myself. I look at that, that's a million-dollar place. I mean, that is absolutely beautiful. And the person who called said they didn't understand why that didn't fall under 707. So I said that I would, I would request to see that agreement. It may be time for us to take a look at that.
And when you say it really looks nice and it's a million-dollar facility?
Oh, it is, it is.
And that we didn't do that?
No, they didn't.
They did it, right.
But, Jack, when we look at every penny, I just want to see the agreement, because how, how long ago, Josie, did they do that, do you know?
They've been down there... I don't know.
I've been here 19 years and it's been...
They pay, they pay everything. I don't think the school district does anything other than let them use that property.
Water, water.
The school district doesn't do anything down that property. That's been in effect back, I would say, at least 30 years. That has been an agreement down there, because I was involved with it for many years. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Patonic had one time talked about turning that over to the ball field. You know, that because they have sunk all the money out of their own fundraising to build the dugouts, concession stand, all the piping you need to drain, the pony leg field, dugouts, the backstop, everything was done by, now it's the Southmoreland Racquet. It used to be the East Honeymoon, used to be.
The reason the person called was that it's, it's such a big facility, she, the woman felt they were making huge amounts of money, you know, again, I don't know. But her real concern is, does that really still belong to the school? And if it does, do we use it?
Why don't we just donate it?
And, well, maybe it's time to do something like that.
The property, the school district, the facility...
Well, it would be, Josie, anything on your property is yours, and...
I see your point about the difference between the school district and the racquet.
Are you going to talk about the...
In my opinion, it's time to give it to the racquet. Because they have a good program on, get the kids off the streets, and everything is running real good down there. And I think before something happens that we have to go and maybe sell that facility or whatever, that's just speculation, that it should be done prior to something that happens, and I think now is the time.
I agree with you, which I think we ought to look at talking to the racquet. I think they have a, not a long-term lease, but they have a lease with us on that field. And I know that it's been a concern of theirs about the money they put into that field, they'll never get that back. And maybe there's, we could sit down with them and work out some kind of agreement about, hey, I can't see, not continue.
Oh, they have a wonderful program.
Oh, absolutely.
The question was, do we still own the property?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we own the property, there's no question.
So to answer your question, and I misunderstood your original question. I'll try.
See if you can find that.
Roughstall does fall under 707 for other things. For example, somebody wanted to have a car show in the parking lot. That was a 707.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. I was talking about the field. I was going to say, David, do you have that, a copy of that?
Yeah, we'll look into the files and see if we have some.
I don't believe that I have a copy of a lease. I mean, I know they've been there for a very long time, but I don't remember working on a lease. I remember having a discussion with Mr. Beistall quite a few, number of years ago about, you know, there was the very beginning of a discussion about whether or not to transfer the ball fields or do a long-term lease. And at that point, because the district, you know, had a lot of different possibilities about what its space needs would be, there was really no movement on transferring ownership of the ball fields. I think one of the concerns could have been that if you ever needed to expand the building to the rear, that you might be out of room. But insofar as the actual substance of the agreement, I can't tell, or the lease, I can't tell you what's in it because I don't recall ever working on it.
See, somebody said there isn't one.
No, there isn't.
There might be.
Would you say, Mike?
I don't know.
I don't think there is, because I've been on the board for nine years now. I came to the meetings five years before that. I remember when they discussed having Mr. Beistall and Mr. Patonic meeting, and nothing ever got voted on since then that I can remember in 13, 14.
There may have been something going way back then.
But having said that...
You're thinking right now, they just had an annihilation. And if I'm not mistaken, is it 50 years? Up there because of the fact that Mr. Slate was one of the people that first started that back, and he's the head of the security? And I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's 50 years. They just had an annihilation.
Let's check into it. I think if the, let's not assume that there's any problem here, because they have, for reasons of their own, have not approached us officially of wanting any change or anything. It's, I remember well in the 90s, we would discuss this almost on an annual basis, of their using that, they would upgrade the facilities, and they would tell us what they were doing. Whether we had an official agreement, but it was, it was like Mr. Beistall said, they took care of, they took care of the grounds.
Oh, yeah, and they do.
We owned it. And it may even, for their, for liability issues or whatever, they may prefer to keep the ownership. That would be for them to say. That I don't know, and it may be advantageous for us to give it to them or whatever. I wouldn't make any assumptions other than just to say, apparently it's a good relationship right now, let's, let's check it out.
Levi, my point is to be fair to them and to us. And if in fact they're, they've been there that long, they deserve some consideration to maybe a different arrangement. And maybe there isn't any arrangement, you know, and that's not good either, right?
No, it's not good because of the fact that any given day, the school board could vote to throw them out.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
And I don't want to see that ever happen, because they've been good to the school. Plus, I think the school's been good to them, and the relationship's great. But it's the idea, someday it could happen. And I think there ought to be legal papers or something draw it up, or donate it to them or whatever, that property back there, and make a, an access to the property through our property, to make sure that it's done properly. And I think we, I've got to agree with Mr. Alt. I think we ought to sit down and do something.
My request is to research what we have in place, and if there's nothing in place, let's, let's talk about it as a board to see what we should do, to be fair to everybody.
We will report back to you, probably not by next week.
All of us, I'm just, oh, it doesn't matter, yeah.
It's been 50 years.
What's another 50?
Leslie, while we're on the rental, I'm trying to think, how much time has, Mr. Patonic, how much time have you, have you had here to look at this agreement now?
Which one?
The 707 policy.
Well, at our last meeting, I got it, and then I fell into my preparation for the beginning of the trial on the Diane Gordon case. So I did draft a memo, had a discussion with, with Mr. Benz, and then I had a meeting with Mr. Benz and Dr. Molnar this past week, and I gave them a memo. And I thought it was going to be in your board packet tonight, but...
It will come out in a separate covered, sitting on my desk.
It didn't make it into the board packet. And the idea would be for, Dr. Molnar is taking my comments and making some changes and her suggestions, and then it should go to the committee, because the entire committee hasn't seen it. So I do apologize that this is slowing things up, but I had to prioritize that trial, which became more intense than I had originally anticipated.
Can I answer a question, Levi?
Sufficiently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions on 707? World War II monument?
You remember, at our last meeting, Mr. Colbert came and discussed the possibility of putting a World War II monument on the property at the stadium. He has been in discussion with Mr. Mizwa. So Lee, can you maybe step to the podium and give the board the update on where we are there and what his thoughts are?
Yes, I, I looked at the design that he, Mr. Colbert had down at his shop, and we also looked at some of the surplus brick we had left over from the project. But they were going to purchase the brick, I gave him the brick numbers from Donley Brick, and they were going to purchase a cube of the red brick. We looked at the location of the foundation, it would be in front of the left flagpole. And he does have a sketch or a drawing that he could, I could copy and get from him. But he's ready to proceed with the project.
So what we would do is make sure you get a copy of that sketch before the next meeting. Give you an aerial view perhaps of the stadium parking lot with an X as to where it's going to go, and we'll ask you to...
Where's it going to go, Jack? Where is it?
The two flagpoles. Lee, help me out here.
As you come up to the two pillars that have the lights, the pillar to the left, there's a flag, there's a flagpole on each side, it would be in front of the left pillar. They actually painted a rectangle spot that's going to go. The foundation of the flagpole doesn't extend that far, there weren't any utilities under there also either.
Do you like it? Do you like what they have to offer?
They had a nice monument down at Roughstall, too.
Do you like what they're proposing for us, Lee?
I think it would be nice.
Is that where the orange ribbons are around Cole? There, right there to the left of the entrance? Is that where it's going to be at?
Yes.
Because I noticed them the other day.
Yes. I can pick up the detailed drawing from him, and he'll have it.
Will you do that, and then we'll mail that out with the Tuesday board memo next week?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
New business, storm drainage?
I'm going to give you something before we go to storm damage update. I forgot to put a couple of things on here this week, but while I'm thinking of it, we're going to ask you to vote to authorize administration, to seek bids for the transportation contract. The transportation contract is up at the end of the fiscal year, 12/13, and we need to start to get that process underway. So we'll ask you to grant permission for administration to prepare a request for proposal and begin to advertise for, for those bids.
That's critical.
It is.
Any discussion or questions?
What's next? Storm damage?
Storm damage.
Mr. Mizwa, we're going to call upon your expertise again. Lee came into my office today, he said, every day we find more. So Lee has an update for you, and he can tell you where we are in terms of what's going on here. Just up for the public is, as you may remember, I think it was July 23rd or 24th, we had an electrical storm pop up, and there was a lightning strike outside of the high school. And my understanding is a 25,000-volt line dropped on top of a 12,000-volt line. I don't know what that means, except that a whole lot of electricity went where it wasn't supposed to go. And we sustained significant damage to a lot of the electrical items at the high school, the maintenance building, the primary center, and the field house. So, Lee, I'll let you give us an update on that.
Okay, at the high school, there is a surge suppressor. It has to be replaced. I think that's item number three. Replacement will be approximately $7,000. It did stop the main voltage from going into the school, but it burned, it's burned out the components. We did have some damage at the school in lighting, lighting a few electrical circuits. Maintenance building, it took a pretty good jolt. The meter outside actually was smoked glass inside. They came and replaced that yesterday. All the items on there, I've had people come in this week. Item number six, they checked today, that has to be replaced. Garage door circuits, there were, all the fuses burned out, we can get those back online. Hot water tank, they're coming in, I believe tomorrow morning. And the office HVAC unit's a total loss, that'll have to be replaced. Once we get all this replaced, I think we're going to put a voltage suppressor on that building. It wasn't in there now. SBC, we're still trying to evaluate that school, we still have a lot of damage in that school there. We're going through some of the systems, and already had combustion in, boiler controls were bad. Camera system, they're supposed to be in for that. And the walk-in cooler and freezer, both had to have some components replaced, but the cooler has to be replaced, but we had problems with that just before the storm. Each day, I keep finding more items. I checked the traffic signal meters today, and both on that road, the meters were burned out. And I contacted West Penn Power, that's our claim number at the top, and I spoke to them again and added more items to that claim. They're going to send out a representative, and we're going to go over all these items. And our insurance company also went over all the items with me, and they went through all the schools. But each day, we find more.
Any questions on this from Mr. Mizwa? Our goal right now is to make sure that we're ready to present a safe and functional school on the first day of school. You know, and we're dealing with West Penn Power and the insurance company in terms of the finances. But our main concern right now is just to make sure the buildings are safe and operational.
Is that a real open end? If you find anything after this that could have come from that storm damage, we'll be open-ended, you can go back and pick it up under the insurance.
When I spoke to West Penn, they wouldn't, I asked them that today because I added more items to the list. They just said for me to talk to their investigator.
Were our facilities specifically vulnerable here? Are neighboring residences or businesses hit in the similar kind of way?
Yes.
Sure.
They lost TVs, microwaves. If the item was on when the storm hit or the power came through, chances are that item, if it wasn't fused, it got burned, it burned out. What we're doing, we're finding a lot of coils, small coils burned out. The sensors in our shop, when we opened it up today, the panels actually aren't.
My understanding, Mr. Miller, is there was damage, and I don't know how far it went the other way, but it extended from our building pretty much up through Hawkeye.
We also had a few items at the middle school that I'm going to talk to West Penn about also, because it involved small coils. And the coils were the item that would get, be affected the most by a power surge.
So we're not sure if we're going to cover certain of the value, do you think LA enough to do it, or?
I don't have all the, the gentleman who came today, he's going to send you a quote to the hot water tank, the HVAC.
You sure if we're going to cover anything?
We hope so.
We hope so.
Can we have a deductible?
Yeah, there is a deductible, I don't know offhand what it is. Do you, Bill?
I want to say, I don't, I don't know.
This could be hundreds of thousands of dollars, right?
Possible.
Lee, I think addressing what you said, doesn't there come a time when we finally sign off and say we're done? We just don't sign off if we're not done, right? I think that's how you do that, if you still have concerns. You know, people get robbed in their houses, it may be six months later till they go to get something and realize it's not there. So this is not uncommon.
Right, yeah, we're documenting on a daily basis. We're finding things now that we would, if this had happened in September, we would have known earlier, because we have teachers, students in the buildings, we have areas in the building that nobody's in right now, so, you know, when someone goes in and tries a plug or a light switch, they find out it doesn't work.
But I think as long as you don't sign off, we should be okay.
I think so. Louis, school claims is our carrier through the furium.
School claims, is that what it's called?
They sent a representative, I took him on a tour of all three buildings.
Any more questions?
Just that far, nobody matters?
Yep.
Did we lose food in those rooms? They were empty.
We...
We lost very little because we had already moved out of office. Some of the, some of the other projects, I would like to just, I have several of the items.
Thank you. Voting floor plans?
Yeah, I had a request at the last meeting to look at the floor plans for SES in the middle school. So we will distribute these to you, but we will ask you to return them before the end of the, at the end of the meeting. I've asked Mr. Claire actually to collect them. One of the reasons for that is anytime we've gone to a school safety workshop seminar, they tell us that our floor plans should kind of be kept under wraps, because with all of the school violence and things that have been going on lately, we just don't need those to be in the wrong hands, so we will be collecting those. I think one of the things that we were talking about here was, there was a thought that perhaps we could consolidate SBC and SES. So I just did a brief analysis, and assuming that we keep the band room, the general music room, the art room, the library, and the computer room intact, and assuming that appropriate spaces set aside for special education classrooms, that gives us 28 usable classroom spaces at Southmoreland Elementary School. Four of those classrooms are currently not being used as classrooms. At Southmoreland Primary Center, we have 16 classroom spaces currently being used as classrooms. Of the 16, one is used for a life skills classroom, and one is being used as an autistic support classroom. So if we were to combine the two buildings into one building, it would necessitate the elimination of 12 elementary classrooms. So if we were to assume the two classrooms were eliminated from each grade level, which may or may not be the way that this would go, that would mean 32 to 33 kids in a classroom in kindergarten, 25 in first grade, 30 to 31 in second grade, the same in third grade, fourth grade, 38 to 39 kids in a class, and in fifth grade, 37 students in a class. So at this juncture, with our current enrollments, it's not recommended that we attempt to consolidate the buildings.
Any discussion, questions?
Yes, is that the final decision?
That's the final recommendation from me. When I came here, I can remember my interview, and the person that was interviewing me said to me, if you were to die in service, and some days I think I might, but, what would your epitaph say? If the teachers wrote your epitaph, and I can remember, I said, "We made us better at what we do, but we thought we..." "He made us better at what we do, but we thought we did it by ourselves." So, it was gonna be the epitaph the teachers wrote. And then he asked, um, what the kids would write, and I said, um, "I would like them to say he helped us learn and he was always fair." And then the question was, well, what would the board say? By now I'm getting tired of this line of questioning, and I said, "Son of a gun, why don't we hire that guy?" And then he said, "What would the parents say?" And I said, "The parents would say, 'I took really good care of your kids.'" Um, those class sizes, um, in my mind, aren't taking good care of kids. Um, I, I took that as, as a promise when I, when I said that to the board. If, if we have too many kids right now to squeeze into that building, I don't know how else to say it, Ken.
Well, don't we, we still have, uh, the high school. We have space there.
Well, we were talking in the last meeting about putting administration there, which I'm still in favor of.
Well, I think we're still gonna have space.
Can we go up there?
Well, we, we have to move up there, whether it be in fifth grade, uh, sixth.
Then with the high school, eighth grade.
Or whatever.
I don't believe there's space in the eighth grade and high school.
Says we cannot combine these groups. And I, I understand in good times, we like little classes and we like kids to be separated. Using our good times. I, I would like to continue further with, uh, the closing of the school and, uh, and look at us utilizing all the space up at the high school, not only for the administration building, but for, for moving classes up there.
Give us the numbers again.
And then again, I'm assuming two classrooms are eliminated from each grade level, so we'd have to lose twelve classrooms. Um, thirty-two to thirty-three in a classroom at kindergarten, twenty-five in first grade, thirty to thirty-one in second grade, the same in third grade, thirty-eight to thirty-nine in fourth grade, and thirty-seven in fifth grade. Um, our primary mission here, and I'm gonna be talking to you a little bit about that later, is ensuring high levels of learning for everybody. And, um, in good conscience, again, I, I can't put that many kids in a class.
Jack, I don't think you need to do that, but I think that's, that's pushing something, but I'm gonna go back to this Piper Jaffray report, which, um, came from you, I guess, to them. First of all, my question is, um, it says that the way you're, um, you're structured, I guess this is the organizational level, which is in Harrisburg, says K to six and seven to twelve. That's what it says. The school district is organized on the following grade level structure, K six, seven, twelve.
Well, in, in terms of accounting and how Harrisburg looks at things, even though six is housed in a middle school right now, and that happens in many districts, six is coded as an elementary grade level. We built them, and I tell you that wasn't.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing.
We have the code sixth grade as an elementary grade.
Okay.
So, K to six is our elementary, so we're not pre-K to six. We don't have K four.
Right.
Um, we're K to six in the elementary, and our secondary school is seven to twelve.
Okay. Why can't we do that?
Well, well, let's go back to, let's, so let's go back to the, the basics here. It is, this is very helpful. If I look at this, it appears that in the two, in the two buildings, there would be the possibility of five classrooms available. Now, if we wanna make a drastic change in, uh, in class size, but assuming, uh, kind of moderate, what I would consider moderate class size, we have four, the possibility of four here in, uh, in Southmoreland Elementary. On the other hand, we have how many classrooms out here at the primary center?
That, that are vacant?
No, 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 that are being used.
Sixteen, I believe.
Well, it looks like, okay, the classrooms and, and that you're, you're, and if you'd include, are you including their, uh, life skills?
I'm including that, yes.
Okay, okay, sixteen. But let's, uh, doesn't it just kind of, I mean, just sort of in a common sense, sort of stretch the imagination of taking those sixteen and putting them into four? Did the equivalent to four? Doesn't?
I'm not asking that, I am saying we have a lot of empty. Here, here's the problem that I, I can't understand why people can't understand. These schools were built for many, many more students than we have. And if that's the case, what is occupying all those seats?
Well.
You know, we're, we're looking at hundreds and hundreds
No, 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 wait a minute.
of potential seats that are not being occupied right now. Where are they?
No, no, okay, are you gonna let me?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. We had a school building called Roughstale. And that is closed now. So, we have reduced the number of, uh, buildings, and we have consolidated. Uh, and I, I think it's helpful for us to constantly look at that. But for, for us to think of taking sixteen classrooms and moving them into four classrooms, to me, it, it just boggles any kind of common, kind of educational common sense.
You can't do that. You can't do that. We're not asking for that.
I, I, we've never said that. But by the same common sense, if you have two thousand seats and you have sixteen hundred students as an example,
Okay.
there's four hundred seats. Where are those four hundred seats? I'm not saying there's four hundred seats in these four classrooms, but there are four hundred or five hundred seats that still exist in these four buildings.
Ken, one of the things you have to look at, we have, you, you still need English nine, English ten, English eleven, English twelve. You still need chemistry, physics, biology. So, you have rooms, especially at the secondary level, that are dedicated to subjects. Uh, are those classes maybe a little smaller than they were twenty years ago? Probably so. But you're still covering, with the exception of, uh, a couple of the programs that we've eliminated, you're, you're still covering the subjects. So, at, at the high school level especially, your space, you, you're, I'm not talking desks, I'm talking your classroom space, is assigned to program. And then students attend the program. Does that make sense? The middle school's very similar.
Yes, but I think you have, you can work around that. I mean, those rooms aren't occupied all the time by those groups, are they?
Oh, French and Spanish?
Well, no, but, but.
Sixteen kids, French, 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 all day, right?
So, you have a, a room set up for French, and the bulletin boards are in French, and the materials are in French, and you put a math class in there?
Mm-hmm.
But, you know,
Yeah.
from a programmatic standpoint, it, it's just not sensible to me. And I, I mean, uh, it is an affront, but it's just not.
Can we go back to this Piper Jaffray report? Cause this was your information. And Levi, according to this, we have eight hundred and sixty students less than for which the buildings were built. We're trying to get to the answer to that question. Eight hundred and sixty's not a small number. There, there, we, according to this, this, Piper Jaffray, which came from them, there's room for three hundred and ninety-seven students at the elementary, uh, and middle school here, and Alberton has two hundred and ninety-six. So, there's room for a hundred more. Somewhere along the line, something, somebody said something that was used to get our credit rating. This is how they got our credit rating. We're, Ken and I are asking this answer. Where are those eight hundred and sixty empty seats, according to the Piper Jaffray report? Where are they? So, we're gonna look at these blueprints, we're gonna look at these floor plans. We're gonna try to figure out what happened to those eight hu- eight hundred and sixty kids. Even if you had fifty kids in a room, it's like hundreds and hundreds of rooms. I, I just, hundreds, I do, we can't figure out where these eight hundred and sixty empty seats are. And nobody can seem to give us the answer. And I think that's a reasonable question, don't you Levi? Cause it's based on this report, which was how the buildings were built. This is what they're saying. That when the architects built these buildings, they said, "You will house," it says pupil capacity, "you will house this many students." But then we have enrollment, and there's an eight hundred and sixty student difference. But we're trying to figure out if we built buildings for this many kids, and we only have this many, where are the empty rooms? It's, it's a question. I think it's a, 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 it's not even confrontational Levi. It's just a logical question that we want an answer to.
Let's look at, uh, the autistic classrooms. How many we have those now, which they didn't have back then? And then you have your learning support, that's another room, and your title one and all that you didn't have back then.
Well, Piper Jaffray was just, that, that, that report is, is relatively new. And when the buildings were, were renovated, with the exception of the primary center, which we haven't renovated, we did have most of those programs.
Yeah.
We didn't have the autistic support program.
That's the only one.
Okay, so, what, what is the PDE capacity of the autistic support room? Twenty-five kids, let's say. Uh, Dr. Pike, your special in-person, what, what's the, what's the caseload?
We only, we only have a couple, we have two or three kids in there. We have two or three, yeah.
Right, but eight is our maximum.
Right, and we have two or three in there. We're not arguing that. The question is, with eight hundred and sixty empty seats and a K to six, seven to twelve organizational pattern, what are, where are they? We're just asking a decent question for a decent answer. We're not even being confrontational. Our contention is that those seats are there, and that it's up to us to take whatever, uh, patterns we need to, to re, it's just a matter of reorganizing. And we're not even talking about taking teachers away. We're talking about bringing the teachers with the kids. We've said that since day one. You know, we're trying, maybe two or three jobs go instead of thirty when you're bankrupt. I mean, this is what we're trying to do, is save jobs, and this looks like the most logical way for us to do it without affecting learning. I look at some of these art rooms and so, they're huge. They're the size of two full classrooms.
Well, I understand that, that this is not a scale drawing. It's a drawing that, that a secretary did on an Excel worksheet, so these are not actual measurements.
Okay, this is why, Ken and I, and certainly I.
For example, the, the art, the art room at the primary center, uh, it's actually an art and music room. Uh, it was formerly a first grade classroom. Okay, so it's just a regular classroom size that shares two programs.
And, and you don't need two libraries. You know, you consolidate libraries, do that all the time. They're moving away from print books anyhow, aren't they? I mean, look at how big some of that space is. But we're just asking for reasonable answers to, to logical questions. And we're not being confrontational. We just can't get an answer to where the eight hundred and sixty empty seats are.
I, I have shown you the floor plans. I've told you the enrollments. Um, I don't know how else to answer your question.
Before we go back to the high school and look for any classrooms there?
Mr. Croft checks here. He can tell you how many empty classrooms you have.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Come on up to the mic, Dan, please.
It's the floor after administration there.
And frame your comments, uh, assuming that administration will be taking up, um, you know, some of the classrooms on the third floor.
Moving the administration building to the third floor would mean no, I would actually be one short.
How many rooms would the administration have to take up?
I don't know. I haven't seen any specific plans.
You make that assumption, you'd need one. You don't know how many classrooms are in it, or how many rooms you're gonna have to give to the administration?
If they took the entire, assuming the entire third floor was staying, I'd be one.
And is that what you're saying you're requiring, is you're gonna need the whole third floor?
No, I, I need, uh, again, that's why you authorized me to advertise for an architect, which I haven't had a chance to do yet, but I will be doing that during the coming month to find out how that floor can be partitioned. Um, I, I don't know how many square feet we need in terms of fire codes, all that stuff. That's not my area of expertise. Um, I would suspect that we would not need the whole third floor.
So, we may have some rooms.
We might, we might.
What about on the other floor?
Uh, currently this year, we'll have one, uh, because we still have two language teachers on the third floor.
What about the lower floor?
Nothing on the first floor. Wood shops and then.
So, if something broke down tomorrow, there would be no place that we could accommodate these students. And that's why there would be no classrooms.
We don't, we don't have classrooms in the same sense as an elementary school. You have wood shop, you have a tech ed shop, you have, uh, a corot choir room, um, an art room.
And all those rooms are occupied, what, seven periods a day?
Well, you have most of them. Currently, unless, uh, there's a study hall or things.
How many spaces are between these rooms?
Oh, that, that's, that's the big one. Um, it was built for a thousand thirty, and they have six hundred and forty-six in there.
So, we have one.
There's like almost four hundred empty seats up there.
And even if the administration building wasn't coming over?
Not assuming we have all the kids. My mommies and daddies only have one kid nowadays. My mom had five. I have one.
What's the question?
That's right, define it more.
Sorry.
If, if the administration building wasn't going to move into the school, how many, how many classrooms will, will we have? Because maybe it's better to leave the administration building where it's at then, and if we have the classrooms closed, Alberton?
Uh, the third floor currently has one to, I believe it has eight. One is sort of partitioned in an unusual way. One's a TV studio, one's a sound room, yeah.
So, it, between the, uh, middle school, elementary school, and the high school, we have at least twelve, or twelve, uh, would you say eight? I'm, I'm sorry, would you say twelve or eight?
Eight, eight.
Eight.
Eight, eight and four, and one more, thirteen. We have thirteen classrooms as a possibility, if the administration building did move in to the, uh, high school.
Uh, well, at least eight.
But at least, yeah, we'd say it'd be the highest.
Because there are so many specialty rooms at the high school that, that things would have to be retrofitted. You'd have to retrofit a technology education classroom into a traditional one, or the entire first floor has one section, which is traditional, which is the math area. You know, your traditional seats, uh, blackboard type of structure. The rest of the first floor are all specialty classrooms, labs, art, uh, technology education. So, those, those don't appear or put themselves forward like a traditional classroom.
Well, the consensus was, uh, in the administration that, you know, we wouldn't save a whole lot of money in closing the administration building. Maybe we ought to put this around, leave the administration building where it's at, do improvements that might be needed there, and, uh, close Alberton and move it into the other schools. Because I think, I think right there you could find enough classrooms, Jack.
Well, uh, again, uh, you know, I'm willing to continue to look at it. At this point in time, I, I don't agree with you. But I'm, you know, I'm willing to look.
That's all I ask.
No, and I, frankly, I, I think.
Thank you, Dan.
What, what I hear your, your questions, if we would be dealing with widgets, of what would be a maximum of widgets in a certain period of time and a certain size of boxes, then it would be a different kind of a category. Uh, but we're not. We're dealing with education. And in that sense, whether a classroom has twenty, or has thirty, or has fifteen, you still need that, that amount of space for it. It's just like a house, to, to me, or like, like a home in some kind of ways. So, I don't see us providing any answer for you that will satisfy you, uh, that, that, that will be satisfactory to the questions that are being raised. Because you're committed to closing Alberton as a primary center.
I'm committed, I'm committed to saving money.
You're, but you're committed to?
If it means closing Alberton, so be it.
Okay. Uh, so I, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, I don't, I don't, not gonna pursue it further, but I, I don't, I don't, I, I think any proposal that we give, or any explanation that we give, for the reasons that, for you, you have your own reasons, uh, I don't think will be satisfactory to it.
I will agree with you.
Well, the, the main question is who's gonna move up to the high school? It certainly don't like, do you want an eighth grader? Then that doesn't follow with the middle school thing, and you certainly don't want to put elementary up there. So, who's gonna go there?
Hey, can we take, take the common sense approach? Of look at our total budget, look at our enrollment, compare us to neighboring school districts. We're a very efficient school district. If you look at our total budget compared to total enrollment, achievement, we're doing very well. We don't, don't knock that. But, but if it is not broken, let's not fix it. Uh, so I'm hesitant to make radical changes of something that is working very well and that has a culture also that is, is, is sized to work for achievement.
Levi, what's your, uh, response to the, uh, three scenarios that were given to us by the business management leading to bankruptcy? What's your, uh, response to that?
Okay, we have a solution. Let's, we can't take a vote tonight, so let's see about putting it on the agenda next week to see if there's enough votes to have the administration keep pursuing this.
Good.
Is that acceptable, everyone?
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Can I ask you something?
Well, that's a done deal.
Is it the administration building?
No.
Or consolidating, uh, the primary center and all the buildings?
The enrollment for your, uh, elementary this year, has it gone up significantly?
Our kindergarten enrollment has gone up significantly. I'll be discussing that a little bit later with you.
And I think we're gonna get more students coming along because we're a high achieved school district? And we've seen it in the elementary. I think they're up, what, forty students this year? And that's, that's a plus. So, you know, we have to look at this too. We could have a big enroll from where we stand then, once we close school down or whatever we do. So this is just my opinion, that's-
Which in the paper this week, they included the foreclosures. And there were ninety-eight properties in foreclosure in East Huntington and Scottsdale. That does not count Upper Tyrone and Eversen because that's Fayette County. There were ninety-eight. I was told that there are over two hundred properties for sale in our school district, for sale, for sale. Now granted, some of those foreclosures were on businesses. I understand all that. But the bottom line is, we, we can't find any evidence that there's going to be an increase when you look at the number of houses that are in foreclosure for, I'm sorry, for sheriff's sale, for sheriff's sale, for non-payment of taxes.
You don't have evidence that you can support that with either because you don't have the right figures.
Yeah, you do.
Just the paper.
But you have twenty-some years, every year is the point.
No, but she's saying two hundred now.
Oh, you're talking about the houses?
Oh, for sale, yeah. And that's, okay, erase that one. The bottom line is we have ninety-eight properties that are being foreclosed on for sheriff's sale, for non-payment of taxes, just in two of our four districts. That doesn't indicate that things are going to get better. Maybe I, I'm not seeing the big picture there.
You know, anything we would say would not satisfy you. You believe the doomsday is coming economically?
No, no, no. Mr. Salo told you doomsday is coming in three years.
And if you believe- I did not say that doomsday is coming in three years.
We saw this, we'll be bankrupt in three years. The bad news three years, the good news four years.
That could not happen.
That was a hypothetical scenario.
Exactly.
And if you, if you compare how much our expenditures increased this year and factor that into the third scenario, then the district will be fine for twenty-four years. Our expenditures increased point three percent this year. In those scenarios, the expenditures increased one percent. So in that scenario, our expenditures increased three times as fast as, as they actually did. So if you factor that out, then using the other variables the same, then, you know, we have twenty-four years.
Let's put this on the agenda for next week and-
Well, no, I want to respond to which. This, again, you have this at home. If you look, we're going to be losing a hundred and ten students by the year two thousand seventeen. Because these kids are already born. I mean, we already know who they are. This is the Piper Javory report. We're down a hundred and ten students in five years, which according to this report. We're not making this up. We're not. We're trying to be responsible. We're trying to, to look at the needs of the taxpayer, the student. We're trying to save jobs, and nobody seems to understand that.
Academic goals, please. Yeah, I talked to you last month about some of the things that we've been discussing as an administration. And I'd like to talk to you about, Mr. Claire, would you collect those floor plans for me, please? He can write on them, it's fine, I'll get you to write on them. We would like you to formally adopt the goals that we have talked about as a district. They're rather broad goals, but one with things that does, it sets a tone for the direction we want to be moving this year. And it kind of gets us all on the same page in terms of where we're trying to go. So one of the things we did, and I kind of put this on the first page that you have, and we looked at our strategic plan and we looked at a rather lengthy mission statement. And we tried to condense that as best we could. And the best way we thought to condense that as our mission in a nutshell is high quality learning for all. And when I say high quality learning for all, that would include students, that would include teachers, and that would include the nine of you that are sitting around the table as well. We believe that in schools where the adults are learning, the children are learning. And we believe that when the adults stop learning, learning certainly slows down for, for the students as well. So that's kind of how we encapsulated the mission. If you look at the second page that I gave, we tried to clarify our district vision and values as we saw them as an administrative team. We will continue to implement the three big ideas of a professional learning community with fidelity. And those three big ideas are very simple. Focus on learning, and we focus on learning through development, developing our collaborative culture, and we focus on results. Those are the three big ideas we've been looking at for the last several years. By focusing on these, these three corollaries, our results have certainly improved, and we would like to continue to do that. And we will demonstrate respect and belief in students through the promotion of effort-based learning. And when I say effort-based learning, that doesn't mean that we're going to pat little Johnny on the head because he combs his hair well and tries really hard, so we're going to give him an A. If you look at the last page, encapsulating effort-based learning is helping students to understand that what we're doing here in school is really important. You can do it, and we're not going to give up on you, even if you give up on yourself. So we're continually finding ways to assess students, to find out where their weak areas are, and to find creative ways to provide extra time and support, primarily during the school day, but in some cases by extending that school day as well. So that's where effort-based learning comes in. It has students not giving up, but trying and trying and trying until they get it. It's not that, we're not going to tell students, you don't understand it. We're going to say, you don't understand it yet, and we're going to keep working with you until, until you do. So if you go back to the third page, I'm jumping around here a little bit. For two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we're asking the board to adopt these goals. All students will successfully complete every course and every grade level. And on local, state, and national assessments, eighty-five percent of students will be proficient in reading, ninety percent in math, eighty percent in science, ninety-two percent in writing. And those will all be a bit of a stretch from where we, where we finished this year. And you'll hear about those results as I give you the state of the schools report in a month or two.
What national assessment?
What about it?
Which one is it? Which one is it?
Occasionally, we are assessed using the NAEP, the N A E P.
You are?
Yeah.
Do you have those results?
Well, we haven't been assessed for several years on N A E P. Schools are randomly assessed, and I think the last time we were assessed was maybe four or five years ago, in one subject area. But I can find them for you.
So if you're not chosen, is that what you're saying? You're chosen for N A E P?
Yes.
If you're not chosen, then you won't be doing a national assessment?
Correct.
Then this is not accurate.
It's accurate if we're, if we happen to be chosen.
Well, there is no national assessment. There isn't one. That's all I'm saying, there isn't one, Jesse. There isn't one. So how can you say it's in there when it's not?
Sometimes it is in there. And I would, I would hope that we have a goal of doing well on those assessments when they occur. Would you concur with that?
This is twelve thirteen, that's all I'm going to-
Correct, and we don't know if we're going to be assessed in twelve thirteen, because that list hasn't come out yet.
Okay, why doesn't our district then select a national assessment and do it anyhow? I think that would be wonderful.
That's, that's a thought.
Let's choose to do the Iowa, the Stanford, or just, you know, a nationally normed grade level test and give it to our kids and see how it compares.
We, we did that for a very long time. And when we began to use, when we began to use the standards and align our curriculum with the P S S A and began to benchmark our students using the DIBELS, we discovered that we were giving the Terranova, actually. The results weren't being used, but we were spending a whole lot of money buying the tests and having them scored for not a whole lot of useful information, which we were getting more useful information from the state assessments.
Yeah, those tests have useful information. They give item analysis for each kid.
They do give item analysis.
I mean, they're good.
What I'm sharing with you is our, our focus was succeeding on the state assessments. Those were the assessments that we were spending our time and analyzing those items. And we were not using the results of the Iowa or the Terranova at that point in time to a great extent. So we did not see that as a prudent use of dollars and as you, so-
But right now, our children do not receive a grade level test. There's no grade level scores for their tests, none. You have no idea what grade level they are on those tests. It can be up there and be at kindergarten.
We are not, you are correct, we are not giving a test that measures grade.
And I think, I think we deserve that. I think, this is what I believe, contrary to what some board members think. I don't believe you're going to be born in Southmoreland, go to school in Southmoreland, get married in Southmoreland, live in Southmoreland, get a job in Southmoreland, and die in Southmoreland. I think we need to prepare our kids for national interaction, national challenges. And I think we should measure them nationally. That's my point. We don't have national assessments, and I think our kids should have them.
We don't disagree with the need to prepare them to compete in a global economy and with the common core and the state standards which our assessments are aligned to. I believe that that, that's the goal, is to prepare them to compete in that kind of a world.
Yeah, twenty-six states have opted out of common core.
Understood.
And there's a lot of bad, bad, bad stuff.
Ours, ours is not.
No, but I'll talk about that when I give my IU report. They did, you know what they did this summer.
The second goal would be, we will continue to eliminate the gaps in student achievement that connect to socioeconomic and I E P status. We've done a pretty good job of eliminating that socioeconomic gap. I E P status, which is in the red, is something that we've added this year. And we need to work a little bit harder to try and get those kids the extra time and support so that, so that their achievement is a little closer to where we would like it to be. On the next page, district goals, these are more soft goals. We will create the conditions that promote the ongoing job-embedded professional learning vital to the continuous improvement of educators. And we recognize that effective effort is the main determinant of achievement and will constantly promote effort-based learning in our practices, policies, and behaviors. So those are the things that we will be asking you to look at and adopt at the next meeting. Any questions or comments?
Remind us again, what, I E P, what does that stand for?
Individualized Education Program. Those are students who are involved in special educations.
Is there anything in here that you haven't already been doing?
Everything you see in red is different than the formal goals.
No, I'm not talking about what's written here. Is there anything in here that you're not already doing?
The percentages are higher, right?
I think our teachers are already doing.
Absolutely. And we're asking the board to make a commitment so that that is a district initiative.
They're already doing it.
Yeah. And we're actually, in a lot of our reading, my principals and I are involved in book chats. We get together every week or so, and we read a professional book, discuss the chapters. And we've been reading some work by Carol DeWek on effort-based learning. And there's some different focuses there that we haven't quite been doing in the past. So we're tweaking things a little bit.
Effort-based learning has been around since we started living, Jeff, where you tell kids, this is important, you can do it, I'm not giving up. It has a name, but we've been doing it.
Right. But have you, as a board, ever voted to say that's important here?
Not since I've been on the board, you know. It's a good thing, it's a good thing, right?
Exactly. Mr. Potonic, school solicitors proposing, would you discuss that?
Well, I just have a resolution. It's the standard form of resolution to authorize me to go to the school law workshop. And the cutoff for saving money on the registration is the end of August.
May I risk the agenda? So that would be on your, on your forthcoming agenda. Mrs. Huggins has a couple items that she can discuss publicly and then one for executive session. So Lynn, are you there? First item is the contract for food service at St. John the Baptist. We're currently doing that, but I think there are some changes in the wind for how that's going to happen next year. Is that correct?
They've approached again for operating the food service for next year, and we need the board to approve another one-year contract for that. I will be evaluating the fee that we charge St. John's. There may be a slight increase in that. From what I can see, on the enrollment roster that they gave us, I'm thinking the servable kids may drop, so we may change the way we deliver foods to, to them as opposed to having a person on site. We may be working with that a little differently. But this is for the board to approve the contract again.
So are that contract ready for next week?
I can.
Okay, great.
The number of meals that we serve there, that they did last, or that you would be projecting?
Probably we did between ten and fifteen breakfasts a day and probably anywhere- Where between twenty-five and thirty-five lunches a day. And I'm thinking based on the grade levels that I've seen that are enrolled next year, that could drop a little bit. Did that go good since that was the first year? Yeah, it went, it went, it operated fine on our part. And I think it was a win-win for them because they, they didn't have to deal with all of the paperwork and everything involved.
Questions on St. John's contract? We're going to skip the next one while we have Lynn, and you want to talk a little bit about this?
She could talk about Eversen.
Not yet, that's coming soon. The salad bar.
Yes. We, I have placed on the bid for board approval to allow us to advertise for bids for removal of the salad bar that's located in the high school. That salad bar was placed in the high school when the high school was originally renovated. What, was it back in the late nineties, probably?
Right.
It never was actually used as a quote-unquote salad bar. It was more used as a storage of pre-made salads. We have a better vehicle to do that now. We have four other areas in that cafeteria to do that. It's pretty much, takes up about a quarter of the space of the cafeteria. So we'd kind of like to, if there's a restaurant or such that could use it. It does need repair, and the reason we actually quit using it for holding our pre-made salads was because the temperatures, we were constantly having to ice it down. And we just had more priority for spending of repair equipment as opposed to repairing the salad bar. So we think the best move for functionality of the cafeteria would be to move it out. So what we'd like to do is seek bids for someone who would like to purchase it and they would also be responsible for taking it out.
Mr. Proctor, can you add the T D studio to that bid?
Kai, I updated you in your last, one of your recent board members, about the situation with the summer feeding program at Eversen. Very low participation, but yet Eversen Borough Council would like the program to continue. So Lynn, do you want to, Lynn actually had a meeting with some of the, at least one official from Eversen?
Right, we met with Mike Manisak in my office after the article had appeared in the paper to discuss with them and kind of give them an idea that the summer food service program isn't actually funded or operated by the school district. It comes out of the food service funds. And because of the loss that we were having with that summer site, then that would take from, you know, any funds from the National School Lunch Program because we have to fund that. So it was just kind of a concern that the numbers were significantly low and the amount of money it costs to operate the site. I mean, we were probably, and the amount that we got for reimbursement for the meals was not even covering the food. It was basically barely covering the labor. So that's why we were considering closing it. But they've agreed to, for the last two weeks of the program, fund half of the loss. And then at the end of the program, which is Friday, I'm going to run all the numbers and see where we were with all the sites, Eversen included, and give Eversen a heads up as to where we are for the whole year. So they said they may budget for that next year. They really want to keep the site operating. They feel that if it feeds one kid, that it's worthwhile. Financially, you know, if, if it's costing us thirty-five dollars to feed one child, it's something that really would have to be reviewed. But that's where we are with it right now.
Using your numbers, I went through and I calculate. It costs you six dollars and forty-five cents a meal just for labor, plus the cost of food. So I figure they could eat at Applebee's cheaper.
Yeah, we kind of said that behind the scenes, that you could actually probably provide a voucher to eat somewhere else less than it was to keep the program.
This doesn't make sense, Lynn.
Yeah, and that's why we entertained, we notified them. We, we did run it for almost six weeks, and that's why we decided we were just going to close it two weeks early.
Right.
And, and they didn't want us to do that, so.
Well, you know, I, I was very surprised at the comment in that newspaper article implying that if we don't have that lunch period, their children aren't going to be fed. And if I was a parent at Eversen, I'd be very offended. I'd be very offended.
Well, the program's there for the kids to come out and eat, so.
Yeah, but, but to imply that, you know, one child, that, that I thought was pretty nasty. But I just think at six dollars, you can actually go to Applebee's. They have a six ninety-nine special.
Exactly, I mean, that might be some, some way to look at it, that it might, we might be better off. There's other options, I guess, to look at even transporting the kids. It's only, it's less than a mile to the Lox Park site. Right, it's pointing, it's eight tenths of a mile from Eversen to- Right, it's pointing, it's eight tenths of a mile from Eversen to Lox. And that site's very, very, very popular, so.
What, I know you're going to give the numbers now, but approximately, what is Lox, how many come there for?
Lox is, it fluctuates, but it could probably be anywhere between seventy-five and over a hundred, depending on what the menu is that day. So it, Lox Park is a site that would pay for the labor used to deliver the meals.
No, just, I often see them there at Lox. And it's, I really wonder for, and I don't know what the Eversen people, how they'll look at it, but my hunch is a lot of Eversen kids are coming over to Lox. Because there's kind of a culture there of, there's just a lot of parents and kids and it's sort of a summer get-together, they have a good time. And their activity.
That's a possibility.
And it's a nice facility there and everything. And I would agree with the.
We discussed that in the office, that there's chance, you know, there could be kids going to that site. In fact, a couple of, the two workers were conversing and then there was a suspicion maybe that one or two were visiting those sites, so.
They could provide taxi service.
You're probably, you probably could.
Cheaper and the kids might enjoy it more, but in any case.
You could probably almost tap in and transport the kids back and forth cheaper.
So we'll continue to look at that program and work with the officials of Eversen. Either, you know, as a climate alternative, or perhaps work with them, you know, lots of ways to make that more of an attractive site for the kids. There are a lot of kids living in Eversen.
Right.
So maybe we just need to, you know, work with them and determine how to make that a more attractive site. Thanks, Lynn. The item that we skipped because it was between Lynn's two items, we'll be asking you to approve an agreement with Interim Healthcare. We've contracted with Interim Healthcare now for several years. We have a young man who attends one of our special needs schools who requires professional nursing service throughout the course of his school day. And as a result of that, we have to provide that service. We contract with Interim Healthcare. They ensure that there is a professional nurse on staff. If the regular nurse isn't there, it's their responsibility to make sure someone else is. It's been a very good arrangement for us and we would recommend that that continue. Parking lot asphalt? Yeah, Lee, I'm going to let you talk a little bit about this. We talked to you about the asphalt at the primary center parking lot. Got some quotes on how much that might cost. So Lee, do you want to address that?
Can I include that in that?
Yeah. I don't have it in mind for some reason.
I did receive three quotes on the parking lot slash playground area. I put an asterisk on the third quote because the person who gave me the quote was concerned on the condition of the sub-bays. And I believe that was a two-inch overlay. And the other ones, the other two were inch and a half overlays. I can still search for another contractor to try to get another inch and a half overlay, but I haven't found one yet to come in and give us an estimate.
Just taking off, taking off the old and all brand-new or just going right over top?
Just going over top.
That's thirteen thousand dollars?
That was low, low bid. The other one, removing.
It's like that big?
Removing everything and adding two-inch, two-inch, I believe, I don't have the exact figures with me, but it was in the upper twenties.
Yeah, I went over there, walked around there, and there are two huge, I'm going to use the word, plastic playgrounds. One here and one there. Why do we need this?
Mr. Claire?
Yes?
Question about the playground use at the primary center? Come on over to the mic so we can do.
Do you have students who use it if it's particularly hot outside, who go outside, that's a place for shade. You're not going to find a lot of shade underneath some playground. So some of the kids will play underneath there at the tables or sit and play right there with the teacher supervising them. So it does provide that kind of shelter for two kids.
It's just one tiny corner.
Not all kids want that. Not all kids want it, but some do.
Okay, so then they're back in the sun, it wouldn't matter where they are. But as far as the shade goes, you just go down the steps and it's right there. I mean, you don't walk too deep.
You're talking about the pavilion too, it's not the same, all the pavilion and the basketball area.
Yeah.
Well, I think I said this before, the day I was there, there were seven kids, it was a Friday evening, seven kids playing basketball and like four other adults running all over the place. Nobody seemed to be tripping over anything. Seriously, they were not, again, I mean.
I can't all get over the, I don't know.
There were all kind of kids over there and their parents were with them and there was no concern.
The only thing I can speak to, I can't speak to that a lot and be sure anybody's following it. I would say that if you look at it, you have grass grown through some cracks, kids, especially at that age are not the most careful runners. Having three that fall down pretty consistently.
Just keep them off of it. Don't they play in those playgrounds?
They do, most of them do, but you're asking specifically about the area that you're talking about. And there is a pavilion there, it is sheltered, kids do like to go wherever it's hot, so that's all contained.
This can't be just for that area. This has to be for the whole.
For all, but that's part of it, that area's part of it.
For the whole area that's blacktopped.
And then secondly, you don't play outside in December, January, February, March, April. I mean, we're putting this kind of money in a building that we may have to close, I think that's a serious consideration.
Would you play inside during winter? That is true.
Yeah, and if there weren't any playgrounds there, those plastic ones, you know, I would say this would be critical, but I'm not getting this. And like I said, there were kids running all over the place and their parents were with them and nobody was tripping or anything.
If you redo that, then there's those basketball dukes, they're not, are they functional, are the basketball dukes functional? So say if you just tear that all out and plant grass and put a border around, under the pavilion and put gravel under there and rush it through grass, would that be cheaper than this?
I gotta be honest with you, I don't know too much about construction, but what I will tell you is that that area that's underneath, it does get used from time to time. Kids do go under there. I know we have activities where people do like to use it too, so that has to be something.
I mean, it's nice to have a pavilion and all that, but if you don't, I don't know if it'll be cheaper just to rip all that out and put grass and put gravel underneath the pavilion?
They're saying no, Justin, they're saying no.
No, I'm saying that's not a decision that I.
No, I thought Lee said no. Didn't she say it costs more to take it all out than it would be?
No, that was to take off.
Oh, and repave it, I'm sorry, I let you in and just take that.
Just take it all together.
That doesn't come real cheap, will you? So again, it's starting to fall into disrepair. We wanted to at least get a ballpark of what it would take. So consensus, do you want that on the agenda for next week or not? That's consensus of the board.
Are there other options? Can it be patched? Can it just be patched?
How far are these taking you guys from, how far are they within? Because this comes into this bid, travel and all the equipment and everything like this.
I mean, I'm telling you, people.
Actually, they're paving here, this site here.
I know, but isn't there local people who's closer that would have all this stuff as far, the equipment and everything, would be cheaper?
I called, I could search for more. I've called, at least, I've called probably four other companies that have it. These are the three I've called. At least, I think, probably Pittsburgh, different places around.
That's a bell burning.
Would this be done in time for school though? If, say, we say okay next week, are we looking for this to be done from the beginning of school?
It would not be done in time for school.
So does it, if we say, if we wait till next month, it's not going to really, it's not going to be nothing.
Wait till next year and you see what the decision is.
So again, is that something you, you know, you even want to look at at this point in time? We wanted to give you some information so that you can make an informed decision as to whether or not that's something that you want to do at this juncture, that you want to look at or not. So that's where we stand, so.
I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but if you put it off till next year, the price of asphalt could go up a good bit just like with the price of this building project went up because you waited more than when it should have been done. I'm not saying, but I'm saying at least to vote on it, not, I'm saying, I'm not saying do it.
Now we're back to that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar air conditioning too.
As much as we've talked about this and looked at it, I'd like to see it on the agenda next week for the lowest bid.
I think we should consider this in part of the bigger picture, the whole building itself, along with, like we said, the air conditioning.
And if we do put on the agenda, I would like to encourage everyone, as Catherine did, to go up and look at the facilities and look at what's there. So it is all the asphalt, is that what you're saying?
We could actually meet there at six fifteen, six thirty, take a look at it and see if you like.
Why can't you get five gallons of Roundup?
Well, it's cracking.
I know, I know it is, Josie, but.
I think the reason for that.
That don't kill the grass, you're not accomplishing anything.
I think the reason for that is we're not allowed to use Roundup on school.
Aren't you?
It's not, right wing, pesticides and kids don't mix it real well.
I mean, I was expecting to be some really horrible smashed-out thing. Like I said, there were kids and people.
Running and tripping and stuff.
So does everyone want to go theirself or you want to meet next week before the meeting?
I'd rather just go up sometime, it's up to you.
We were just talking about that one where the pavilion is, right?
That's what I'm asking, what the blacktopped area at the bottom.
We'll take a look, we'll take a look at it.
That would be that whole area there.
I'm just making sure everybody looks.
Yeah.
Put it on it, we'll look at it.
Okay.
So we're meeting or is everyone just going to go take a peek?
I'll just go my own.
I'd rather go individually. Some of us looked already.
That's fine.
Kindergarten enrollment?
What about the other asphalt? What about that other asphalt?
The asphalt that, between the two roads. The lowest bid we got on that was twenty-five thousand dollars for that little piece of asphalt. In good conscience, I could not recommend that amount of money for that little wee piece of asphalt. And that became especially apparent to me because I spoke with Mike Barrett, or actually Mike approached me. And he wanted to talk to me and talk to the board at some point possibly next year about writing a grant as part of the Jacobs Creek Watershed Project to eliminate sedimentation into that stream that we just piped. And if he were able to write such a grant, we would be able to have that lot paved and possibly even that area that we were just talking about under a grant at no cost. And that seems to me to be a more prudent way to go.
You're going to hang your hat on there?
I'm not going to hang my hat on it, but I'm not going to spend twenty-five thousand dollars until I know.
Well, I'm sure they're going to spend twenty thousand on the other one. You know, this is, this is such a, I feel so bad because it's such a big expensive building and it's all beautifully done, you know, and you go down way and you just crash into that dirt.
And one of the things that has happened, Lee, you want to address what happened there today?
The state was doing a project on the Smith and Scottsdale Road. We were able to get some of the material, the ground-up material delivered. And we actually spread it on most of that site. Hopefully, if we get three more truckloads, we'll have the entire site covered.
Well, that's a different story.
Millings from the state.
That's a different story.
It's not paved, it's.
No, but that's, that's.
It's cut off.
That's something.
So it is covered, yeah. And we would have, no matter what, we would have covered it in gravel or something before winter, but this was a very good solution, it didn't cost us anything.
That's wonderful.
This way, if we do have to add some gravel right now, we won't need as much, we just want to talk up.
Because you have a good base of it. That's wonderful.
Kindergarten enrollment?
Kindergarten enrollment, I have that under personnel, but that should not be under personnel. That should really be under public portion of the meeting. So just talk a little bit about that. At the beginning of the summer and through the first part of July, I'm going to ask Dan Claire to speak up on this as well. Our kindergarten numbers were hovering in the one-forties and the lower one-fifties. Near the middle of July, enrollments dramatically increased with our current enrollment. I have one-sixty-three here, but Dan informs me that as of today, it's one-sixty-five. So our initial plan, as I outlined in that memo to you on July twenty-fourth, was to eliminate a second first-grade teaching position and to transfer that individual to a kindergarten position. You might remember that we already eliminated one first-grade position and moved that person to second grade earlier in the summer. So if we use this particular scenario, in kindergarten classes, we have a class that deals with special needs kids. We like to keep that class a little bit lower, so we would have about sixteen students in that class and about twenty-one students in each of the other classes. In first grade, we have special needs kids in two classes. One works with our learning support kids and one with our artistic support kids. We would try to keep those class sizes at about seventeen. Other classes would have twenty-two to twenty-three students in a class. So that's the scenario, the number one. Another thing that we thought about as we examined this a little more closely, we looked at our federal grant money. Currently, our Title II allocation is approximately a hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars per year. And one of the, in addition to that, we have about a hundred thousand dollars left from last year's Title II allocation. Title II monies are very targeted, they can be used for certain things. One of the things they can be used for is staff development or improving teacher quality. And another thing that they can be used for is class size reduction. You may remember back during the Clinton administration, there was CSRI money, class size reduction initiative money. That money was rolled into Title II money and it became administered as part of the same program. So Southmoreland, so we have those monies available to us. Currently, in Title I, which is another federal program, the primary center is currently a targeted assistance school, which means we have two reading specialists who are assigned to service reading students in reading who are most in need. But that building does meet the requirements for a school-wide project because of its poverty level. And as a school-wide project, we hope to apply to make it a school-wide project during the next year so that it would be school-wide for the following year. SES is already a school-wide project. In a school-wide project, you don't have to target your monies toward your most educationally disadvantaged students. Be greater flexibility in how Title I dollars are used and class size reduction is one of those options. And that's actually what we're doing at SES. Instead of having the reading specialists that are pulling out at SES, we're actually using those monies to reduce class sizes. So if we were to use that option, we could put an additional kindergarten teacher in place using federal monies and leave first-grade classes as they are. That would result in special needs classes with about sixteen students per class while each of the other classrooms would have twenty-one students in kindergarten, which would be the same as I mentioned earlier. First-grade special need classes would still be at about seventeen, but the other classrooms would be at about eighteen to nineteen instead of twenty-two to twenty-three students. If we were to adopt this scenario, it would really have no effect on our local budget because this would be a federally funded initiative and we do have the dollars to do that based on what we believe about class size and student learning, especially with very, very young kids. We are recommending Option Two, that we use some of our federal dollars to add a kindergarten teacher and offer those smaller class sizes in first grade. So it would open that topic for discussion.
Jack, you have six teachers in third grade for one hundred and twenty-two kids and six teachers in fourth grade for one hundred and fifty.
That is correct.
That seems like a thirty-one, is that right, thirty-one difference, thirty-one child difference?
You know, it is. Right now, third grade, we have two classes that work with special needs kids. We try to keep those classes to about seventeen. Other class sizes in third grade are about twenty-two.
But it would seem to me that third grade needs another teacher more so than the other ones.
Again, those kids are a little older. We try to focus our attention on catching and providing that time and support small class size earlier. We feel the earlier, we can provide that extra time and attention, the better off we are. Third graders, as a general rule, are much more independent, as you well know, in terms of self-help skills and knowing how to do school. They're still learning those things in first grade and kindergarten.
I see that as very unequal.
We don't disagree that second and third grade have higher student-teacher ratios than first grade and kindergarten.
So the first option you gave us was you transfer someone that costs us nothing more than what we're already paying.
Right.
But under the second option, you're going to hire a new teacher.
Right, and pay for that out of federal monies.
Explain how that goes, because I'm not real clear. Explain to me how you spend, why was all that money left over? I'm not, explain to me how that was used and is not used.
Because the Title II monies were left over, if my memory serves me correctly, as when we were eliminating some positions. One of the positions that was eliminated was a Title II position. And because Title II money and federal money, you have to supplement and not supplant, we could not just eliminate that position and say, well, we're not reducing positions, so now we're going to supplant a teacher that we were already paying out of that money. Okay, so we did have some money left over. Now, with that kind of money, we can do some amazing staff development, which is another thing that we can do with Title II money. We think the money's better spent on servicing kids.
When you get federal money and you hire a teacher, does that federal money pay one hundred percent of the cost of that teacher? Not salary, but cost?
In this case, it would.
Does it usually? I mean, what about your other ones?
Yes.
They cost us nothing, they pay for their retirement?
With the exception of our two elementary guidance counselors many, many, many years ago when that setup was initiated, because they don't specifically deal, they're paid through Title I and because at that time we were targeted assistance, half of their cost is paid out of federal and half is paid out of district because that was the arrangement.
So they're costing us...
That's how it was set up.
They're costing us money.
And always have, and that was a decision that was made by the board at that time. And that's the way it needs to be right now, especially at the primary center, because the primary center setup is a targeted assistance school. So yes, the guidance counselors cost us half of their cost and always have.
But I think a lot of people are in the impression that federal funding is paid for a hundred percent of these costs.
Well, federal funding, in this scenario, federal funding would pay for a hundred percent of this teacher because that's how we would write the program. The current Title II teachers that are paid through Title II and class size reduction are a hundred percent federally funded, retirement, healthcare, the whole nine yards. The Title I teachers that we have, both in the targeted assistance school and in the school-wide project, are currently a hundred percent funded out of Title I monies.
Is the only targeted school we have the primary center?
Yes, and actually, the way Dr. Scott wrote the Title I program this year, we are expanding the program a little bit so that we can fund our after-school tutoring out of federal dollars instead of local dollars because we did get a significant increase in Title I monies this year.
And that will be a hundred percent paid? The tutoring will be a hundred percent paid?
I believe he has it at a hundred percent, yes.
So let me get this straight, at the Albertson Primary Center, we have fourteen teachers, a guidance counselor, a principal, a nurse, a librarian, and two Title I reading teachers?
No.
No, what don't we have?
You have fourteen teachers, you have two-thirds of a guidance counselor, because she also services kids in second grade, you have a half a principal because Dan's lost a lot of weight. In addition to being the primary center principal, he's also running your entire special education program.
I understand that, I understand that.
So he's being paid half salary, half of his cost come out of that particular budget. We don't have a nurse, rather, we have a nursing assistant.
She's a nurse.
She's not being paid as a nurse?
No, she's not, she's a nurse, okay, she's a nurse, whatever you want.
Oh, you're talking cost, right?
Medical person, okay, medical person, yeah, okay. Librarian?
Correct.
And two Title I teachers?
Correct.
To teach two hundred and some kids.
Is that an idea?
Three hundred, oh, three hundred.
That's just unbelievable to me. Are we going to talk about this?
You can talk, I mean, I gave you the information, I've read it, you're certainly welcome to discuss. Dan, do you want to add anything to what I said?
What I'd like to say is that at the end of the year this year, we have a pretty big group going on in the second grade, so a first grade teacher was sent along with them. So in order to make that class size a little bit more powerful, we'd really not like to see us take somebody else again from first grade because they've already given somebody.
No, I wouldn't either. I wouldn't either.
So if we definitely need somebody in kindergarten, one of the things I've learned in one year as an elementary principal is in order to have really successful class structure, you can't have a lot of kids who have just come to school for the first time not having the experience of knowing how to behave, how to go through routines, learning the process of being in school. So it's important to have somebody who knows how to do that, who has some experience, who knows how to get kids to be successful in kindergarten. I'm asking you to think about that as you're making your decision, I understand it's a difficult one. But from the principal's seat, I want kids to have that success, to have teachers that aren't overwhelmed by the numbers.
Well, I've worked in that field for a long time and I'd like to go back even further than kindergarten and if I ask you to...
Let me, can I interrupt? It's related to what they're discussing before you jump in?
Yeah, it is.
Well, I'm talking, so what you're saying is related? Because I thought you were moving on to what you just asked Dr. Moe.
You said that kids are coming to school for the first time.
Yeah, but I just wanted to throw in because it's related to the financial part. Did I understand correctly that...
I'm sorry, he was talking about the need for another teacher because the kids are just coming to school, that's where I was going.
Okay, well, I just wanted to address the financial, which is what we were talking about. Am I right in understanding that if they're paid with the Title II money, it is part of the contract or whatever, that if that money dries up, then that position is...
It is not part of the contract, that would be a decision that the board would make.
So I thought we did that in the past, didn't we?
No.
No? Okay.
You can also take that money and do something else with it too, right?
Title II money, there are very limited things that you can do with it.
What?
Staff development, class size reduction for the most part. About it?
So it would be year to year because we don't know if we'd get that money the next year?
That is correct, but...
And the teacher would know that...
Well, you can't hire somebody on that basis and the teacher wouldn't know that because it would be a furlough based on seniority and checkerboarding and all that stuff. So depending on how long the position lasted, that position may go, but it might not be that individual. And there are certain ways that you, you know, you can reduce your teaching staff, one of which is through attrition. So, you know, we have some retirements that would certainly reduce costs if we don't need the position. So there are many ways to adjust that staff.
Thank you, Captain.
How's that fit into the contract? Teacher's contract, how's that fit in hiring somebody differently than anybody else?
Yeah, hiring somebody differently than anybody else.
Okay, I thought you just said it was a one-year...
No, I said it's not a one-year.
It's not a one-year, okay, I'm confused.
What I said was, we hire somebody, no matter how they're funded, we hire them as a member of the special bargain.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, Jack, and that's why I thought when you said...
That's what they are. If the money would dry up and the enrollment, as you folks always say, continues to decline, then we examine, do you need furlough? Do you eliminate positions through attrition, I mean, there are ways to do it.
Go ahead, Dr. Fike, you can, I just wanted to ask that question for clarification.
He was talking about children coming to school and so forth. And for years and years, we have watched these Head Start programs, these early childhood programs, and we've known for years and years and years that they have been total failures, those programs. There's the evidence right there and we've known that for a long time. But what bothers me more than anything is we got all of this research here on class size. And I read every word of it and I analyzed it and eleven pages of it are saying that class size, small class size is good, but only two talk about the possibility that it isn't. And that surprised me because I would think if you're going to use research, you're going to give it all on both sides. But if you look, I'm just going to read from some of this, and this shows up, I think, three times and is probably a repetition. The gains from smaller classes in the upper grades surpasses the gains from smaller classes in the lower grades. And that's in here like three times. If you look at, you go through the material and in only one study did they give any figures. It's all, I can give you some of the words. This guy from Princeton estimates that reducing class size will help, he estimates that. Then they go on to say that this shows says, this says that the smaller classes were significantly ahead. Doesn't say whether it was a week ahead or a month ahead or what, okay, significantly ahead.
Like significantly has to do with statistical significance, correct?
Well, that's, I'll get to that, Jack, I'll get to that. They're calling minimal statistically significant too in your later research here. If you look at college entrance exams, they say, you know, they do better, it cut in half, half of what? They don't say what the half is. They go on in all these phrases constantly throughout all of this, and I read every word of it. You get down to the one on that CSR study in Los Angeles. It says, "The gains are modest, but statistically significant." No numbers, no scores. No scores in the Wisconsin SAGE, no scores above that. But when you get to the one article that he did say, and it reads, "Other studies identified through the literature search found no convincing evidence linking reduced class size and increased student achievement." And again, it repeats itself, I think in the next one. "Even in light of findings that suggest no relationship between class size and student achievement, the preponderance of evidence supports positive effects." In other words, let's just toss out what the evidence says and just do whatever we want. And it just consistently goes on to, you know, they'll make significantly more achievement. But what it really boils down to, if you read it very carefully, is it doesn't matter what number of kids you put in class, it boils down to the teacher in front of that class. Basically, you could have thirty-five kids in a room with a good teacher and you're going to get wonderful results. And you can have two kids in a room with a bad teacher and you're not going to get anything. And consistently, it says that. Also, in many of these studies, it says, "Allowing for socioeconomic background" and so forth. And what that means is they just pull out the kids that they don't want in there. They're, okay, this one doesn't apply, so they make their conclusions based on what's left. And this is an old trick in research, it's been done, it's been done a lot. When you look at, I recently attended a meeting and they said that in the Pittsburgh City Schools, we're spending twenty-three thousand dollars per student and they have the smallest class size and they're getting nothing out of it. Philadelphia, almost a similar situation, one hundred and fourteen filling schools, small class size, they're getting nothing out of it. If you could honestly say that over all these years, that it was class size that was the factor, it is not. It is the teacher in front of that room and the reason we get good results in Southmoreland is we have good teachers.
I certainly wouldn't debate that with you, Mike. I would say that when you're trying to talk about specific numbers, I think that's a good point. Much of the research that you provided, they do talk in some generalities.
They all beg.
We don't have a lot of tests that are given that are national tests in kindergarten or first grade, there aren't a lot of those available.
There aren't any.
So much of what you're going to see will be based upon what they would consider to be a more biased test, a more biased view. In my experience, I've seen classrooms with a slightly smaller number of kids, teachers who are able to teach more kids more effectively. Those good teachers are even better when they're not being stretched to the limit. But your point is well made in that, hey, there weren't substantive numbers in the evidence we look at, I don't know if I fit that with you. But I still believe that having those numbers allows good teachers to be more effective and more efficient with the kids who might need the assistance.
Yeah, did you ever wonder where those numbers came from to determine how many special ed kids are in a room?
Well, imagine through research, you know, over time.
Did you ever wonder about that, why some are this and that? And in some of it's very obvious, like you're, you know, there are multiple handicapped children. It turns out that there actually is some research that supports class size and higher achievement. Do you know what that number is, Dan?
I don't.
Five. Once you reduce class size to five...
Right, and that's unreasonable expectation.
And that's unreasonable, but that is the only research that I've ever found that supports, where they did... Even in one of these studies, they did the control group and it's been no difference, modest difference, modest difference.
And your point again is well made, that there isn't a lot of research that has substantive numbers. I certainly wouldn't debate that with you, even in my research, I find that to be true. But I think we can agree that looking at kids who are successful at schools, often the ability of people to be able to reach that and work with that more individually will determine that. Five is a great number, I wish we had one teacher for every kid, that would be wonderful. Obviously, that's not going to happen, but if we can reduce the number, I think our effectiveness does grow. I think that we have seen that, even though it may not be reflected in specific percentage numbers, as you pointed out, it's hard to measure that. I still believe that it does happen.
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, is kindergarten mandatory in Pennsylvania?
Kindergarten is not mandatory.
Right, it isn't even mandatory in Pennsylvania. Do you know that schools still have half-day kindergartens all over the place? And we're sitting here acting, if we don't reduce class size again, 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 we're not going to prepare these kids for school. And it just...
Now, Dr. Fike, to correct you, we believe that by reducing class size, we can do a better job. I'm not saying if we don't reduce class size, that our efforts in the classroom will fail. Didn't say that at all, please don't misunderstand me.
No, but Jeff...
However, I am saying, as Dan said much more eloquently than I, smaller class sizes allow teachers to reach kids, provide extra time and support more effectively because they're not stretched to the end.
Well then, Jeff, why are we always bragging about our PSSA scores? If they're so good, it's working.
And that's why we don't want to find those eight hundred extra seats and cram all those kids into one classroom. You're exactly right.
I'm glad you feel that it's the building that is the quality.
I have a question, Dan, and I've done some extensive reading once I got this patent. And again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
And before I ask you a question, I found just about as many articles that said time, USA, blah, 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 that when it comes to class size, smaller isn't always better, class sizes are getting better, does it really matter? Bottom line is, and I agree with Dr. Fike, that there really isn't any definitive study that says whether it is or is. The Tennessee Star, you know, experiment or whatever you want to call it, I guess is the one that they refer to most that says in kindergarten and first grade, it seemed to have some impact. And that kind of makes sense because it's their new to the world and the interaction between them. But after that, and the point is, in doing all the reading, a lot of the countries that are achieving higher standards education-wise than us have upwards of forty students in the classroom. So, I mean, I, what, does it really matter? I mean, as an educator, do you see any proof out there that after first grade, it's really going to matter?
I think, again, I'm speaking strictly from my perspective. In the earlier grades, I think it has a really dramatic impact. Kids are coming in, and Dr. Fike, your point about how kids come in from early intervention. I don't know, I couldn't speak to the effectiveness of that, I don't have any research on that, I certainly didn't prepare to talk about EI tonight, so I don't feel qualified to go into that. But we take kids where they come in, whatever they come in at. Some kids don't go early intervention, some kids have very involved early intervention processes. And our job is to get them as ready as we possibly can to be successful. We don't test them official by state records until third grade. So we really have a window of time to help kids that we first meet who may have no educational experience. We may have very in-depth educational experiences because their parents are very involved. It depends. We take them as they come, and I want to be as effective at that as I can be. It's my educational opinion, for whatever that's worth, maybe not very much to some of you, that's your choice. But it is my professional opinion that it does make a difference, especially in those early grades. I won't refute that, you could say in upper grades, maybe that's not so much the case, I don't know that. Looking at my situation, I think it does.
I don't think, according to any of these studies, I don't think anybody can say after the initial kindergarten, first grade, that it has any impact whatsoever.
You seem to have a little more, I don't know.
But again, you said...
And by the way, anybody that does want my literature so that they know that, you know, it actually does exist, they may request it and I will give it to them. But like I said, after, not to belabor the point, but I don't see a reason after first grade that class size really makes a difference. And I'm not an advocate of putting thirty-five to forty people in there, but when we're talking about going from twenty to twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-eight, I don't think it really makes a difference. It is the teacher, and that is reflected in many of these studies, it is the teacher.
And I want to say, I don't want to belabor this point, I'm sure all of you are about done looking at me as well. But in our system, we have worked really hard in the classroom structure to make sure all of our teachers are pretty successful with kids. They're all really good, that's part of the benefit of the system that we run. I do believe that when you do have fewer numbers of kids, especially in my early, in kindergarten, that early time, as you pointed out, especially that it seems like nobody's really debating that as much as maybe in the upper grades, it can have a profound impact. And I think it's worth it for us to do that, and I think it's worth it for us to commit to making sure that at the outset of kids' educational career, we're doing as much as we can. And going forward, hopefully, there won't be some of those issues if we're able to start out by eliminating some of those gaps. That doesn't mean that we'll eliminate all of them, certainly we'll try to... That doesn't mean that we'll eliminate all of them. We certainly will try.
You may not eliminate any of them.
Right, but I think the effort must be there. And again, it's from a building principal's perspective, I can, I can talk from where I see.
We should err on the side of caution and go, you know, with little there is on there. You know, I agree with you. I mean, if we do it, then we can do it.
Right, so...
Well, Dan, you know, for years, and I was pretty, I was really distressed when I got on the board, and I found out that for years, there was a class of kindergarten kids in Southmoreland that the day they walked in the door, they were condemned to fail. Right? For years and years and years and years, these kids.
What's that now?
Developmental kindergarten. Every kid repeated that grade. The day they walked in the door, the day they walked in the door for developmental kindergarten, where did they go next year, Josie?
The kindergarten.
There you go. There you go. There you go.
What, I'm just, sort of in the spirit of moving this along, we've heard various points. I'm hearing from other board members of what they're thinking. So we had some sense of putting it on the agenda next week, or how it's going to act? I'd be interested in hearing from other board members.
I think that...
Think it's a win-win situation?
Yeah. I think very beginning is very vital, crucial. And I think that we should go forward, and if we need to hire a kindergarten teacher, I think we should do that, put that on the agenda. I think it's critical. This is the beginning of their educational career. We want to make sure that we set them off on the right foot. So I think we should put it on the agenda.
Anyone else have anything to say?
It's not hurting anything. It's only helping us. Is it costing the district anything by doing it? And if it goes to the next year and we have to pull it, but for this year, am I understanding that right?
That will fund it, yeah.
Well, then why are we even discussing it? Why don't we just do it?
Why don't we reduce class size in those fourth and fifth grades that are so big? Because...
Again, I'm going to, Ken, you and I don't always agree. But as Ken said, we believe that in the early grades is the best time to have the smaller class sizes. Would it be ideal, in my mind, to have all of our classes a little bit smaller? Of course it would. We understand the constraints that we're under in terms of budget, and...
Do you, Jeff?
Yes, Dr. Fike, I did.
Do you really?
Could you give other people a chance to talk, please?
And in my belief system and in my experience, I have to concur that smaller class sizes in the very early grades are beneficial. I believe that by having smaller class sizes, we can reduce the retentions. And I'll be glad to give you some statistics on what happens to kids who are retained once and twice in terms of their longevity, in terms of their lifelong earnings, in terms of their health, in terms of their job, and in terms of incarceration rate. So anything we can do in the early grades where we have more, generally more retentions to provide those kids with extra time and support, I think we need to do it.
I'd say we just put it on the agenda and see if it goes up or down.
Very well.
Do you want to do your thing now, Captain?
Yeah, there are two things that I want to talk about. I noticed at the very end of the information packet that Dr. Molnar wrote down that he was going to do an evaluation system for himself. Is that right? Is that what that is?
I did, and I gave it to three people that were originally involved with that. They have...
Well, she said they weren't involved. She specifically sat there and said she was never involved.
No, that's not what I said.
Let's play the tapes.
Wait a minute. Don't twist my words. I said, "I wasn't the only one involved."
Okay.
And how can you evaluate somebody if they haven't been on the job going up to evaluate them? That's just...
I have a real problem with a person writing their own ticket.
Well, actually, Dr. Fike, I didn't write my own ticket. I used primarily the ticket that was put out by PASA and PSVA.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And quit it just a little wee bit to fit the circumstances at Southmoreland. So no, I didn't sit down and handwrite my own instrument.
I mean, I know exactly where you get them from. And those are designed to be very general. They have very limited, you know, content.
Why don't you give your input after you see it?
What?
Why don't you give your input after you see it, so...
No, I have one here, Mike. I wrote one. I want your input on mine, too. See, I'm a board member. And if it's committee or the whole, the whole board should have been given it, right? Isn't that the deal? We get the, once there's a committee, the whole board is a committee? Isn't that right?
If you read my contract, my contract says we'll discuss this in executive session.
Well, what I'm saying is that...
And I would ask to go on to the contract.
What I'm going back is the PSVA, the bulletins have come out. And they're now, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that they're saying that the superintendent's contract has to have an evaluation system and it's measurable, right?
So we'll discuss that.
And the results of which will be made public.
I don't recall that.
Yeah, I brought the book. It's in there. That surprised me, Jeff. That really surprised me. But anyhow, I, like I said, I checked, I talked to people. And to the best of my knowledge, there's never been a superintendent evaluation as long as anybody can remember in the Southmoreland.
Would you like to know who insisted that go into the contract? Me.
Well, yeah, yeah. And I'm not questioning that.
Just so we're on the same page.
I know. I'm talking about before. I'm talking about before. As far as I can tell, talking to people who are on boards, no one ever evaluated superintendent, ever. Does anybody know of any that were ever done? Because I don't know of any.
So why don't we discuss this, as he said, in executive session, with one of your second item, please? You can pass that out, and we'll discuss in executive session, as he said his contract says.
Okay, here it is.
For the record, who are the committee members?
Yeah.
Who's for...
Mr. Bentz, Mrs. Rhodes, and Mrs. Kaufman were the individuals who were placed on that committee, vis-à-vis the last board.
And that was stopped by Mr. Seppert, he recalled.
And she didn't deny it, Josie. She didn't deny it.
She didn't deny it. Why do you always make accusations?
Don't call me a liar. Don't call me a liar, Josie. She said there, she said there, and said she had nothing to do with it.
Move on to your second item, please. Do you have another item?
Yes, I want to talk about the policy for citizens speaking at public board meetings. It's my understanding, looking at the policy, that you can only speak at a board meeting if you are a resident or a taxpayer in the district. Is that correct?
Mr. Solis, is it?
The statute says resident or taxpayer. There are one or two other criteria that were in our own policy. I think it was a entity that had a contract with the district or something like that. And somebody who had, there was a really vague phrase in there that I never quite understood what it meant. Can't remember exactly off the top of my head. I don't have my copy with me.
Mr. Patonic, how does this go along with the constitutional amendment for free speech as a citizen? How, what's the arrangement with that?
Well, free speech, there was a number of different areas. Pennsylvania has, by enacting the Sunshine Law, provided for specific requirements about an opportunity for residents or taxpayers to speak at public meetings of school districts and municipalities. Interestingly enough, they didn't do it for themselves. And so that is our starting point of the designation of the basic requirements for who's to be heard from and under what circumstances. I don't know how long you want me to talk about this. I didn't prepare a half hour.
Well, what I'm getting at is that, under the Constitution, well, because it is not in the Constitution, education is a state function, right?
Under the federal Constitution, there's no specific mention...
Right, there's no mention.
And you get under the health, wealth, and general welfare clauses of the Constitution.
Those of the states. Why don't we let people from the state of Pennsylvania speak at our board meetings?
Well, that would be up to you. I mean, people who reside here or are taxpayers here have a direct interest in what is going on. I don't think if I went up to Hempfield, that they'd particularly want to hear from me. I don't think if I went over to Connelsville, or any, not me, but, you know, anyone went over to Connelsville who wasn't a resident there, you know, why would they be interested in their opinion unless they were invited because they had some special expertise and were going to talk about engineering or something?
Okay, but I think you said it when you said the assumption is that it's the people in our school district who have the, people who live in this school district or own property in this school district have the most vested interest in what happens. And that, in fact, they are the ones who should have input on decisions that are made, right?
Well, I'm saying that's what the statute says, that residents or taxpayers.
What statute?
The Sunshine Law.
Okay, but a school district is free to open its, to have a policy that opens it speaking to anybody.
You could sit here and listen to people from other countries if you want to.
No, I'm getting to state because it's a state function. Is that correct?
What?
It's a state function. Education's a state function. And I'm looking at allowing people who live in this state to speak if they choose to at our school board meeting. I think you'll get very...
That would be up to the board to decide if they wanted to do that.
Okay. Well, you know, I was thinking about this a lot because I'm real big on the Constitution. And I thought there's really only two reasons why you would want to limit this board, any board, any board policy would want to limit speech to just the residents of the school district. And that is, number one, they don't want to hear anybody who disagrees with them. But really, number two, they feel that they're the people who are most vested in the interest of these children and who have the most at stake. And I was sitting at home one day, and I went down the list. Dr. Molnar lives in Jeanette. Dr. Scott lives in Greensburg. Mr. Claire lives in Greensburg. Mr. Mason lives in Connelsville. Mr. Swink lives in Connelsville. Mr. Mizwall is in Monongahela. Mr. Krawcheck lives in Greensburg. Mrs. Saint Amont lives in Murraysville. Mrs. Huggins lives in Uniontown. And I'm not sure, but I think John Lee might live in the Southmoreland School District.
Mount Pleasant.
He's in Mount Pleasant. So there you go. So a hundred percent of our administrators who make all the decisions for our children, not one of them lives here. I think that it is incumbent upon this board to take a long, hard look at that policy. I feel very uncomfortable, this is being a hypocrite, where we sit here and say, "No one from outside the district should influence our decisions." And yet, look at what we have here. And on behalf of the people who would want to come and speak, and I don't think there are very many of them. I think based on the fact that it is a state function, we, as a school district, considering this scenario, really have a responsibility to take a long, hard look at what we are sitting here. What are we saying? Are we the hypocrites? And I think the board, we have no policy committee, but I think the board ought to take a long, hard look at that, considering the circumstances. Thank you.
I acknowledge that it's ultimately a board decision if the board wants to provide a wider...
Right.
...degree of participation. So that is ultimately a board question, if that's the direction that the board wants to go.
That's why I raised it.
The public participation section of the Sunshine Law states that for residents of the political subdivision or of the authority created by a political subdivision. So if we created some kind of joint authority with someone. Or for taxpayers of the political subdivision. Or of the authority created by a political subdivision. Or for both to comment on. So, I mean, the statute is talking about the political subdivision. And if you want to open this up to the entire state of Pennsylvania, that would be your policy decision. It is not something that I... I guess that's really your call. It's not something I would recommend, but I just, you know, by point of reference, I don't think I'd want to sit here and have to listen from somebody who come from Philadelphia to tell us how to run our school district.
And I don't think they're going to, David.
I would...
I don't think they're going to.
You never know.
Well, I've stated my conflict, let's put it that way, of being a hypocrite.
Well, I have to point out that you, you're comparing your right to speak at a public meeting and comparing it to whom you hire.
No, I'm talking to why we have the policy. No. I don't care if they live in Alaska and come by dog sled. What I'm saying is they should have, everyone should have the same rights.
Why should you limit...
Well, they're employees. They're not members of the public.
I know that. Oh, yeah, I know. They're getting paid to speak and make decisions.
And you can decide whether or not you want to hear from them, too.
I know, you can't, David.
Well, that's up to the board. I've given my analysis.
Any other board members or before citizens comment?
Well, I have one more thing. I received a letter today, which I will distribute to you. Our former business manager, Mr. Porter, has requested to provide testimony to the board with respect to some of the discussions taking place in recent months. I do not feel that it is within my purview to invite or uninvite Mr. Porter to come. So I wanted the board to make a decision as to whether or not they would like Mr. Porter to be on the agenda for the next meeting to provide testimony.
Five minutes. He gets five minutes. He's a citizen.
Well, and again...
He's got five minutes, Gail, or else you give the same thing to everybody else who writes the same letter. Once he starts talking, he will go two, three, four hours if you let him. I've sat through, and he'll repeat himself and about Sony, about Sony, you know.
How many hours have we sit and rambled and rambled?
I'm elected, Gail. I'm elected, Gail. I'm elected, Gail.
We've heard you still already.
We've heard you guys. We've heard you guys, too.
Excuse me. But David, is this something that we voted on, or is this, we have to be citizen comment?
Well, if Mr. Porter has, and he, you know, at least Pranapwasi would seem to have some special expertise in regards to business-related matters, I think you have the right to invite him, just as you've had the right to invite people related to other specialized matters. He said, "Including no time restraints." Well, that's really up to you. I think you, as a board, have a right to put an ultimate limit on the length of your invitation. And I would also comment, to be consistent, that members of the public or members coming to provide you with information can, don't have a statutory right to ask individual board members questions. And board members are not obligated to answer them. So with those two caveats, I think that, you know, if you wish to, you could extend an invitation, and you could set the ground rules as to the length and the topic so as not to get into irrelevant matters.
Do you have the policy with you, Mr. Patonic? I thought it said somewhere in there, "You're not allowed to attack individual board members." And he specifically states that's what his purpose is. Is that in there, or am I making that up?
There is language about barring personal attacks. And I don't see where he's... I don't agree with your characterization of the letter. I'll put it that way.
I'm requesting time to speak to the board to repudiate the deliberate attempt by Mr. Alt, Mr. Ken Alt. He's named there.
Yeah, can you remember, I'm Snoopy on the moon?
That's right.
These are innocent all, and I'm the rover.
You're the rover.
I don't know what you're referring to. I don't know what you're referring to.
I ought to read the newspapers.
I do.
Well, then you should have read last week's Independent.
It was too-
Where I was compared to Snoopy on the moon, or the Roadrunner.
The letter to the editor was too long.
That was it.
Did that was about four columns too long?
I think we've discussed finances for the past six months. There were numerous references to our past performance. I would welcome Mr. Porter to come and make a presentation. That's all I have to say.
I would, too.
Let me understand this, Mr. Potonic. After he's done talking, I may bring in experts and actual CPAs to repudiate what he has to say. That'll be my right. Is that not correct?
Well, that's the whole problem with what's been going on. We're debating the past endlessly.
Yes, absolutely. You can't change the past.
It's been clear, huh? We spent $2,000, or on how many thousands of dollars, by the auditor.
What does he want to come in for? What does he want to go in for?
Why you keep blaming him and telling everybody that he's done wrong?
If he would have been paying attention while he was going on for his tenure, we would be in the position-
Wait a minute, he has all accusations and-
If I did, but I do want clarification, that I am permitted to bring in actual CPAs and people that do budgets to repudiate what he will speak about.
John Stever spent, hold on, you know.
Josie.
He's been clear. Why you keep bringing it up?
Josie, Josie. The auditor can do the audit policy.
If the board invites them.
Okay. Can you say that out loud, please?
If the board invites them.
I cannot, as an individual board member, invite a person here.
Now, you would have to vote.
It would need to have five votes.
It would.
Majority decides, there are not two people or one person, or, I mean, that would be just kind of the way-
So he gets to present his side for the anti-
You already presented your side.
Well, we don't get to hear from, well, I'm not an expert. He's not even a CPA.
Well, then why are you presenting if you're not an expert?
But this is all, wouldn't be, he only gets to present it if the majority of the board decide that we, we think it's-
This is the busiest time of the school year, and we're goofing around with all this stuff. It's ridiculous. Let's get going.
So how do we take a vote if there's enough interest?
There's only one thing I got to say. I think it's time for us to go for the future, leave everything in the past, go, and be done with it.
Right.
He is our business agent. I'm tired of the law.
Yes.
I'm tired of all, in the papers and everything else. Let's go on with our school district, our education, and life, and be done with it, and leave it go.
I would, you would have to vote at the beginning of the next meeting, because this isn't advertised as a voting meeting.
He can come and sit here and wait till we vote, if he wants to talk.
Could, in order for, maybe to help respond, would other board members express themselves and just, you'd have-
Attorney Potonic just said we can't do that. Can't take a straw vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'd have to vote.
That's fine. That's fine.
They can give their opinion, but it's not fine.
No, no, I don't mean to vote, but I was just, I'd be interested in hearing what-
Let's get an opinion, Mike.
Well, just sort of, I mean, it's very helpful, hearing from an eye-
I would point out, parliamentary-wise, that under your procedure, either the president, on the president's own, can direct that a matter be put on the agenda, or, upon the request of three members, be directed to put it on.
I did have three members call me about this, but I decided not to because-
Can you clarify what you just said? Would that be to put it on the agenda to vote as to whether or not-
Yes.
-Mr. Porter speaks, or to put Mr. Jenda, Mr. Porter on the agenda to provide testimony?
Well, in this case, I think it would have to be to vote.
Excuse me, Mike. Did you say you had three board members call you about this?
After the letter to the editor, yes.
Oh, I thought you were talking about this.
No, after the letter to the editor, they called me. I didn't know anything about this at that time.
I received this letter.
That's what I thought, yeah. I was puzzled.
No, this was after the, this was in the paper last week. So, so we put it on the agenda for next week?
Absolutely.
To let the board-
To vote whether to, what, by testimony or the board?
It's not testimony, it's speaking. It's giving time to speak.
Facts.
Speak to the board.
Any more things for any board members? Citizens comment? Come up to the microphone, please. State your name and address. Name, address, and subject, please, five minutes.
My name's Fred Dugger, and I'm from Scottville. And I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Claire said concerning the playground, and I'm speaking as a teacher that works there. And I just want to give you a little more information than what he was, you know, able to give you at that time. And I'm not advocating for any of you to pave it, to not pave it, to buy, round up and get rid of the weeds or anything like that, okay? I just want to tell you that it is a recess area for us. And yes, there is a very nice plastic, you know, apparatus there for the kids to play on. When it rains, or if it has rained, we still take the kids outside. We don't allow them on the grass, because it's an unsafe environment for them. We allow them to play on the asphalt. We don't allow them to play on the plastic apparatus, because usually, it's wet. Usually, the slides are wet, they get their clothes wet, they slip on it. Again, it's a safety issue. We don't allow them to swing on the swings if it has rain, because the drainage is very poor there. All of the mulch is, it's very poor drainage, and underneath the swings, it's puddles of water. So for safety issues, we don't allow them to play on the grass or in that area after a rainstorm. Part of that apparatus, also, we don't allow them to play on. One of the items on that apparatus we don't allow them to play on is the monkey bars, because we're afraid, they're small, they're little kids, and we're afraid they'll fall and break an arm, or break a leg, and that has happened. We don't allow them on, it's called a barrel slide, where they have to kind of jump up and hang on to both sides of a barrel and slide back and forth. That's dangerous, so they can't use that either. Basically, what they use on that apparatus are the tubes they crawl through, and there's a straight slide and a curlicue slide that they use. Another part of the apparatus we don't allow them to use is a four-square basketball hoop. It's sort of removed off to the side, and when you see that, when you go up there and view that, you'll see it off to the side. We don't allow them over there, because it's a little too far removed from the playground, and it's along the border of the house that is, they're on the main road. And that's the house where there was a dog that bit one of our students one day. So we don't allow them down past there. We only allow them to the edge of the playground, and that happens to be on the other side of the playground. They're not allowed to play with that. So there are places there that are items on that playground equipment, whether it's dry or not, we don't allow them to use. Another thing that we do, as far as using that playground, is when it's hot, when it's 92 degrees in my classroom, I take my kids out there, and it's an instructional classroom in the outside for me, because my kids are sweating to death, and the learning environment is not conducive to learning when it's 91 or 92 degrees in my classroom, which I document. And I take them outside, and I sit under that pavilion, because it's a cooler learning environment for them. So, you know, beyond shade for kids who don't like to play in the sun all of the time, it's because we use it when it's wet, and we use it when it's hot. It's just a safer environment for them when it's not conducive for them to play in the grass or on the playground equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dugger.
Just to clarify some of the things that Fred talked about, the kids not being allowed to use, the natural question would be, why do we have them allowed to use it, right? When those playgrounds were put in, that was a kindergarten-through-fourth grade building, and some of that apparatus was designed for older kids. The K-1 kids played on a much smaller playground, and the 3, 4 kids played on the larger one. Now, with all younger kids in there, there's just equipment there that is designed for older kids.
Can I trade? Is there still one down at SES that's kindergarten that could come up? Is that something that would cost, can you trade?
With the age of that equipment, taking it out would pretty much be the end of it.
Any more citizens comments?
I would, at the next meeting, voting meeting, intend to present to you a motion to authorize the school district to enter into a agreement for mutual releases between the school district and Mr. Jan Kiefer concerning the events of October last, to amicably resolve that incident or incidents, such as to, and to end the possibility of any claims being made by either side against the other, and to terminate the summary charges that were brought against him, and in an amicable fashion. And so that would be ready for you to vote on next meeting, and this could be accomplished in such a way that there would be no further loss of time by district employees in having to attend further proceedings. And I believe, although I will double-check on this, even anyone to have to actually appear in court, by means of having the district attorney's office obtain an order in advance, so that there wouldn't have to be an appearance by either the school district or Mr. Kiefer in court that day, which would save time and expense and inconvenience. So I will have that, there'll be kind of a standard form of motion, and I have a more detailed document, which I can discuss with you, if you wish to even hear about it in And I may have a very, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to have an exception? I guess, or you have any executive session?
There will be an exception.
Okay, so then, that would be possible, to discuss that there. And I could also briefly update you, I'm sorry, I'm going to get my summer wheeze, update you on the tax assessment litigation, which started testimony, but we didn't finish. We have to have another day of testimony in the case with Diane Gordon Warehouse in East Hemington Township. That's all. Anything else?
A question on board function, can I ask? Like you gave us this, it says committee, chairperson, committee of the whole. Is that the way it is, or not? Are committees committees of the whole?
Unless it's an ad hoc committee. It's just a temporary committee.
Well, you can't, like, under personnel, you would do an evaluation. That's not ad hoc. That's a personnel matter. You can't just call everything ad hoc. It falls under, it falls under these things. Buildings and grounds is a 707. I mean, it's all there.
Well, ad hoc committees, like negotiating the teacher's contract, or when a bus contract comes up, or the 707, when it's put together.
Well, that's buildings and grounds, isn't it, Mike?
Well, it would fall under a couple different.
Okay.
It could fall under buildings and grounds.
Okay, but all other committees are committees of the whole. And you said we would all be notified, right?
Question, this, I find this very helpful, seeing how we are in regards to other districts here in Westmoreland, as we straddle over to Fayette. I would welcome seeing the Fayette numbers to, at some, next meeting.
Motion to adjourn to speaker next week.
No, whenever, the next week.
Brad, this is him.
If I may, I wanted to add one other thing. When I came back there, I thought about it. The playground is just not a fair-weather playground for us. If it has rained, we do go out there. We use that playground as much as we can throughout the entire school year. If it's, I don't know, I'm just going to throw up 40 degrees or more, we try and get the kids out. We put their coats on, we take them out. Obviously, we don't use, you know, the mulch area, but we try and use at least the asphalt area. So it's just not that we're going to use it, we're only going to use it, you know, September, October, and then we're going to use it in April, May. We do use that playground as much as we possibly can, just to get the kids out and to get them, you know, moving and get them exercising. So just keep that in mind, too. And I apologize, I forgot to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn to executive session?
So, who?
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
You can-